Continually renewing them. So we are very purposeful in that process. And looking at indicator two, we do continue to meet the expectations of new standards. This year, our team decided to work through new standards for both ELA and math. And they have full implementation plans for the fall. Other than a few things that need to still be tweaked at the high school for math, because changes were pretty significant and you can't just bulldoze those through. So it's going to take us a little more time to get all that changed at the high school level. For math in particular. And then we do have new computer science and cybersecurity standards that are on the docket. We will be bringing you a plan for that in May. So in about a month, we'll bring you our plan. Looking at 10.2 indicator one instructional practices. So we do have a very diligent team of coordinators who spend a lot of time, a lot of their own time keeping up with the research and the latest trainings. They're constantly going to training and making themselves more informed on instructional practices. And then they are able to critique with their knowledge and ensure that we're bringing only the best things forward for our educators to review. So we are very blessed with a brilliant team of coordinators across all of our departments. And then 10.3 looks at the instructional programs. So moving to the instructional framework of Marzano, a couple of years ago, has just really brought the entire process of educating our young people together. This is a really comprehensive system that's helping us address moving toward more learner-centered classrooms and trying to build more self-efficacy and agency into our instruction. And our evidence here is our continued work on the elements. And of course, since we know this is a big lift, we're going slow. We're making sure that they know them and it is a plan over several years. We've imparted them with all 23 elements. We just have anarchy and no movement. And our indicator two is primarily Dr. Jonas's baby. I'm not sure why she adopted that baby, but she questions it herself. But it's a big one, creating the course catalog for all of our courses and all of our program of studies. So we continue to offer a wide array of courses. Sometimes we only offer them in one location in order to be smart about our class sizes with that. But we do have quite a hefty list of elective courses. And we did spend a good five months this year in regular meetings, going through our entire program of studies and getting it updated. So that was a joy. Hopefully it's a lot cleaner there and you can click on that link and see it on the public facing website. So it's out there for everyone. 10.4 instructional programs. So indicator one, our evidence for moving forward with this framework centers this year around the GVC. And so we had three main objectives this year. We wanted everybody to be able to articulate what the definition of a GVC is and to use the key terms that we utilize through that guaranteed viable scope and sequence proficiency scale progression of learning. And then our educators would be able to share what the process is for creating a guaranteed viable curriculum. So the little guaranteed viable curriculum document got an update finally. It's kind of looked the same for a long time now. It has little gears on it that work together. So you could enjoy looking at that crafty plan. Indicator two, this is where we're, it used to say more about like special education and it doesn't say that now. So it's kind of a strange indicator if you don't put that hat on, to put that hat on. Our evidence in this section shares how we're supporting all learners, digging further into our work in special education from learners that have the most significant academic delays to those who have been identified as gifted and talented. There are some key pieces in there. We really have those pieces connected. So the CNI team and the SPED team are working very tightly together. Not, Rachel's not here to speak tonight, but that is something that we are very collaborative on. And then our GATE team has been brought in to really help move the work forward on those fours. That was our goal four years ago when we're so excited and we're actually getting some traction and some normalcy again post COVID. So trying to get those articulated, but we're smarter now, so we'll do a better job. And then indicator 10.5, we did learning walks everywhere this year successfully. First time I get to say that, we actually did them in all the buildings, all the levels at least three times. Or they traded out for a big site visit, which is a big deal. We have a really well-established process at elementary and I would say Ms. Williams Secondary has grown some nice legs. It's come along, so that's going well. The second one, our large district committees meet several times a year, different amounts, about four times each. And they work in tandem with our ALT teams or administrative leadership teams. So a lot of times we'll be previewing the information for the district committee at FL and ELT prior or we'll be reviewing and asking questions after. So a lot of PCs and that cog that work together. And we are still striving for a system to allow us to effectively analyze our data. Comes up from every year that we need, an easier way to look at our data. And 10.6 instructional time. We are pretty strict on keeping things educational. Any special events or speakers or those kinds of things, if they contact the district, comes directly to our department to vet it. This one kind of in between indicator two and two go back and forth. But if I get contacted from an agency, I'll ask them about their purpose, vet through that, whether or not they can service all of our buildings at that level. So if they want to see elementary kids, can you go to 14 buildings? You know, what's that look like? Oh, we're just bringing the circus to town for one day? Sorry, we won't be having you pray through one building. So things like that, we take a look at. And we do have our field trips pretty well vetted at elementary and middle and high have jumped on board for getting that done. Catalyst was needing all those permission slips. It's pain, so if they do it all, if they do it all systematically, it'll be a lot easier for them too. So getting that vetted out. All right, 10.7 resources. We do have a really rigorous process for looking at resources. Again, those coordinators do the studying, they're working with the teacher teams. Those teams are then bringing things forward to the district curriculum committee. We have a rubric, a scoring process that everybody on the committee completes in order to make sure. And then we list out what we move forward and in what order. So if we do have to cut something from the budget, it's because it ranked the lowest in terms of priority. Within, I think that kind of covers both one and two. Because one part leads to the next part for submission. You can see those samples are on the website. Indicator three, funny enough, I think the committee on policy is meeting tomorrow to review this policy. But we do have a policy for reviewing complaints and on instructional resources and materials. They are going to vet that language a little bit, maybe use sound. I think the proposal is to reconsider center complaint, some of those kinds of things. But we do have a process in place for someone is uncomfortable. Generally, we don't get very far on the process. So it doesn't mean that we don't have things that families question, but we're usually able to resolve it before it gets very far along in the process. Once they understand kind of how it's being used, we're pretty, we're pretty careful with what we put in all kids' hands. All right, 10.8, Mr. Mitchell.
Yes, so maybe the resources to which Mr. San refers, they are digital in contemporary times. And one of the most versatile resources that we put in the hands of our learners is a device. With those devices comes access to digital content. So obviously for a device to work, it has to talk to a network. So one of the primary universal base configurations that we provide for protection is web content filtering. So any of the networks here, any of our corporate networks to which your device is currently joined, they have content filtering based on categories. So all websites by FCC regulation have a category. And then we can mark categories that regardless of what the website is, if it has that category classification, there is no access to that. All of our website filtering tools, so we have one that's on premise. The state has one on top of us even. Those are all CIPA compliant, which is Children's Internet Privacy Act. So that helps us to receive federal dollars, to rewrite and things of that nature. But really it's kind of your base standard to which we have or want to be compliant for pride protection to our learners. In addition, when our learner devices go home, they still have an additional layer of protection. On all of our learner devices, we have an additional onboard web filter. So regardless of what network they join, that onboard filter is an algorithm-based filter. So you'll see more false positives with that. And we don't have as easy of capability of broadly managing access to certain sites, but it still works out well. And we have a very well-used, always allowed and never allowed list when it comes to that. So when we get insight of learner activity, one of the big things now is people are creating Google Sites to get to these online games and you can't block all Google Sites. So we have to get specific with some of those, but it's just an example. And I think I go into that dialogue because we also work quite closely with building administration. As we take a look at MTSSB, we have some of our learners that need some additional supports. So this last few years, we've really defined some protocols and have more customized configurations based on some maybe more larger, universal topics that impact groups of learners. But that's really a solid feeling that we could provide that additional support. When the application side is another way to access content. And we have a very regimented, but I think very powerful check and balance system in collaboration with curriculum instruction when it comes to application access. So all applications to which our learners have access are in a self-service portal. Nothing goes into the self-service portal or comes out of the self-service portal without a process that is really direct collaboration between CNI and our technology team. So again, kind of a great check and balance system that we have with that. So when you take a look, we have website filtering contents, which you know limits or inhibits access to digital content through the web, but also application control. And really what we try to do with that is make that learner device functional and useful, but at the same time, safe as reasonably possible.
Thank you, Ed. And I did add to our curriculum meeting on the second catalyst for each person who's bringing forth their proposal that if it involves the web, answer these questions. So that Ed doesn't have to ask them that they already have brought them forward.
Yes.
We, we had a few in March that people were like, oh, I didn't look at that yet.
Then probably one of the newer things, I didn't think about this, but we even put certain devices to sleep that night. It's not a stock configuration in the management console, but we know that learners will just utilize that screen to just waste time and do some other things like sleep. So we've even developed some configurations where we brick it essentially for hours over the evening. And in the morning it comes out of it and it works.
That's brilliant.
It's actually going to happen. Can I break now for your iPhone? Any of you that have teenagers and the new product out of Wisconsin, they can break their smartphone.
My question was about how many of our elementary schools choose to shut down?
Yeah, so that's an opt-in process. It's widely used or primarily at this point in time, used in our elementary spaces. So we have our middle spaces that are curious and potentially coming onboard next year. And our secondary spaces, that gets a little bit more difficult because just as you get older, the dynamics in your life, you just don't know when you were doing that. But right now, we're academic year two, three, two, four, because schools opt-in. We have Burger, Willow Park, Brooks, South, Legacy, Eastwood, and Osborn. So we have seven, seven out of 14.
And they shut down at like 7:00 PM or?
Yeah, I guess I need to have to log in for the stock configuration. And we even get buildings the time or the time to choose the time.
Okay.
But yeah, it's usually, I mean, one building, one to start at four this year, but I think they had some feedback. So I think our earliest is six and our latest is nine. And then we start sending commands of devices at six o'clock in the morning to come out of it. So when they get to school, they're ready to go.
Sometimes the board gets questions about that.
Yes.
Right. There's just one indicator left, number nine. And I believe we are all engaged in the difficult process of our linear enrollment and discussing those certain changes. That is one of the things on this list. Welcome to facilities 2.0. So questions?
So and then this is maybe just more for us to see if we can understand. But I know Marzano really kind of defines a lot of this. But is there any way, because you said there's what, 23 different sections? And we're in the second year. So if there was, you know, kind of a checklist or something, just something that we could visually kind of see, you know, that we could add to this or model, you know, make it easy. I don't want to add anything, but just kind of as a visual for us that don't live in Marzano all the time. You know, kind of where are we at, I guess, is what as I was going through. And if I missed it.
Got it. Alicia, I don't think it is LinkedIn, but if you want to go to the evaluation website, Alicia. So staff and then evaluation. There is a chart on, on there that shows the six-year plan and which elements would be it. Show where, this is good because then you get to see how to find it yourself. Over on the staff and then go to the, if you want to sign in.
Okay.
And then there's, there's a different timeline depending, yep. So just on the little staff drop down, Alicia, you can pick the evaluation because it's all at the bottom.
So these are.
And if you go to instructional on the left.
The elements.
There's four different, there's some horizontal, instructional, non-instructional, district leader, building leader. It's all the way to the bottom. And that chart that you just went by. That shows our timeline of when the different elements will be. And when they will be assessed for educators. So next year, our theme is assessment and feedback. We'll bring in some more elements for them and professional learning on them. We did some this year, we'll do more next year. And then we'll evaluate teachers on it after they've had their professional learning. So we're making sure that they have time to learn first and then get them. And then you can see we've got all of them in play by 26, 27. So that we can start looking at some choice and pieces for our educators to add to that. But we'll continue to only evaluate our brand new teachers on those first ones. So we wind up with this new teachers look different than veteran teachers. So they're divided in the system by how much.
That just means they're open, you don't need that.
And I think to John's point too, if you scroll to the graphic above that, Alicia, on that same page, it shows, it shows it more of, oh, yeah, I gotta close it out, sorry.
You can just click your other tab. Oh, there you go.
Yeah, now if you scroll up, that one is all 27 elements in their domains. And it just shows a really nice flow of, at the end of the day, we really want to empower our educators to say, I'm working on this this year. These are my plans I'm looking for feedback on. We're a new educator, we're always going to look at engagement. We're always going to look at relationships and rules and procedures. That's the 27.
John's questions related to mine as well, which helps answer it a little bit. But one of my main questions was, so if we're going to implement different goals this each year, knowing we're going to have some new teachers and some that are going to drop off. How do we, how do we envision kind of an evolving process, right? So it's one year we do this, this year we do this. How do we make sure everyone is getting everything?
Alicia, we go to the professional learning page now? So we have laid out a couple of different layers in our professional learning plans. So we have time that is called customized, where we're talking to people that teach the same thing. So I'm talking to first grade or I'm talking to high school social studies or I'm talking to PE, whatever their content is. And if you go, I think it's, sorry. To be at the bottom of this same page would be our pie graph. It's what I wanted to just pop out there for you. Are you in professional learning?
She went to customize.
Oh, not customized. Sorry, so just too detailed for this group.
Okay, so just, just as a main.
Bottom of this page, yep.
Okay.
So we have that customized time. Well, that's the little brown, it's very odd shaped pie. We have Marzano time and that's very specific to everyone now. So it's a really skinny slice, but we'll continue to have that. Then we have that choice board time. And so if I'm a new teacher, I might have zero hours of choice per time because I happen to be teaching K through three and I have to do household 1388 and I have to do, you know, trauma training and I have to do, you know, all these other things. But if I'm a veteran teacher, I have 10 hours of choice per time throughout the year. So that's how we're managing both circles at the same time, where we're catching up our new staff while moving our veteran staff forward.
And then, and the choice boards are all district driven. So AVMR, math training.
There's a ton of stuff and then buildings can add.
Science of reading, training, all the different kinds of things. So people can pick the areas that they are in need of or what's happening.
And that page is started for next year. So you can, all of our professional learning has moved to be pages for next year that we're still working on. We'll have our big planning day on June 6th. But that's how we try to build in that new teacher time.
Following up to that with the 27 elements, are there refreshers planned into this or built in? Because I'm imagining, once you get through all of it, first of all, you're drinking from a fire hose. And second of all, it's, that's a considerable amount of time. I would think you would need to see it a few times before it's really locked tight. Or am I missing, maybe there's something else that I'm not.
So we also prioritize and we only have five elements that are the key. So Alicia, please click on, on that same page you're on, but Marzano instructional steps on the left. And then scroll down to the table that has the prioritized elements. Yeah, a lot of instructions there. But the, so we have taken all of the elements and lined them up underneath these top five. So right now we're evaluating teachers on the first board. The last one has that asterisk because we haven't done enough professional learning on assessment and feedback yet. So we are not evaluating that. But the rest of them are then clustered. And so they're, you're not isolating up to 23 elements. We're honing in on, these are the big rocks. So I think it will be much more doable when you think about it that way instead of like, I don't remember all 23 of these things. Those are the main four things that we're focusing on and then we'll add that fifth one.
Almost like supporting elements that, that big power, power element are prioritized. Because they're so similar in nature.
A good 10 of them of the 23 elements are all on domain two, which is all just instructional practice. So it really kind of depends on what I'm teaching and what I need to. So it's like using questioning strategies. So we're using anchors and hooks in the classroom, like you don't need all of those individualized or customized teacher.
And we're hoping the end is that once they've been through that cycle, all our teachers who have been with us longer will know themselves to say, this is what I want to focus on and what I need. So they're going to own it versus saying, this is what the district's telling us you need to work on. That they'll get to that refinement where a newer teacher in the process, they'll look more globally at the big picture of, I'm just trying to get a lesson effectively taught across to my grades and looking for feedback.
Above there is all of the protocols and everything that they get to support them when they go through their online modules or their in-person learning. So everything's been broken down into, what does that mean? What am I looking for in my classroom? This, the next one is, it's a big deal. Assessment feedback is a big deal. Because you really have to know what you're looking for in your assessment.
It's exciting to hear about the implementation forward of the number four. So.
Yes, we are too.
Yeah.
We're still.
But that's what I appreciate about our district is so, and I remember talking about this four years ago, when we didn't have a four, my daughter sometimes asking, well, and they told me I can't get a four. And I, as a parent, said, but it says right here, you could get a four, right? So, but that's what I appreciate is we're always working towards it and here we are now.
Didn't have it well enough, finds coming in. So it's one of the things that we hear from our union leaders on too. So we've been working towards that and I think that will be, that will be very helpful. All right, any other questions? Otherwise we'll entertain a motion to approve.
I just wanted to talk about the special education one. And when we were in New Orleans or the school board, or no, it was current governance. But I talked with Ms. Williams and Dr. Igory about just how it was fascinating that this curriculum where it's designed for every learner to learn at their own pace, their own rate, aligns with an IEP, an individualized education plan. And I'm like, well, it's like we're putting every student on this. But the fact that it's now aligning with the curriculum truly means that all of our learners are on the same page. And that gives me goosebumps because that's something where we aren't leaving anyone behind. They're all engaged in the same topics. It's not one child gets shuffled out of the room and has no idea what's going on. We are all on the same page, we're all speaking the same thing. And even if there is a delay in incognition or whatever it might be, they're still participating with their peers and that you can't, can't. When you're talking inclusion, you can't get any better. I'm so proud of all of you and so grateful for all of you for doing this. It's huge.
Lot of collaboration that happens with those teams.
You see it all the time, like our letters train, that's happening, that we have teachers volunteering time to get this training. It's collaboration between CNI and Special Ed. And we're seeing it now in learning locks at elementary. We were in a fifth grade room and I'm always counting like, well, okay, not all the learners are in here. Where are they? Some are pushed in, some are pulled out. We went across the hall and that same group of kids that were working on specialized instruction, this learning target is the same in that classroom. And we don't always see that. So when they come back in the classroom, they don't feel like they've missed out. They've been doing it in the small group towards the same end. And that's just so powerful for kids to feel a part of it.
Yes. When my, when my, when Carla's little, that's like pie in the sky dream thinking it wasn't even a, you didn't dare ask for that.
Happening.
And it's here. So for the rest of you that maybe don't, you know, see that every day, it's huge.
Very, very.
How that, that they don't feel that they're like, what did she, what did she say?
They don't feel so different, they don't feel like they're not normal.
When you're in the rooms that do the pushing, I was with Ethan this morning at Willow Park. I'm like, okay, who's the classroom teacher? Who's a para where you can't tell? It's all instructors pushing them with all kids. Pretty great.
Some of the teachers look like kids.
That's.
So you really don't know.
That's just very. And very cool. And a questions? We have a motion to approve OE 10.
I move to approve OE 10.
Oh, second.
Oh, second.
All right, let's move on to.
We got to take both.
Oh, oh, sorry. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those are both same side. Further discussion. All right, now let's move on to action I had review and take action on a staffing request. Now we'll turn to Director Minkel for this item.
All right, so tonight you have in front of you a staffing request that is made up of generally activities. There are a couple of, so mostly schedule two activities. And in addition, you're going to see some schedule three contracts. Those are going to be our team leader or department chair contracts. And then there are some schedule four contracts being allocated as well. And so the way that these come forward are through our staffing committee process. And in general for activities, even when there's more requests than there are dollars to distribute, our athletic directors are going to make those decisions. So Mr. Midthun, along with his three billing activities directors, will go through a process of figuring out what are the highest need areas. And so that's what you're going to see in front of you when it comes to that Fund 61. There are the schedule three contracts which come through our general fund. And so those are just to get our Forest High and Heritage Middle School up to the appropriate number of schedule three contracts to get into alignment for their team leader or department chairs. So you see those in addition. And when you're looking at that projected benefit cost for those contracts, for the most part, we're filling those, are these positions with internal staff, usually our teaching staff. So when we're projecting benefits costs, we're really just adding on FICA, so for the tax portion. And if it's a teacher that is currently teaching for us, we're paying a TFFR on that. So those are the benefits costs that you're going to see represented there. Any questions at all on the staffing memo that you see?
Can I ask a question on just when we have all of these added positions? I've noticed it seems like a lot of the, it's not teachers that are coaching anymore, doesn't seem like. Doesn't seem like, it seems like they maybe are former teachers that just hung on for the coaching part. And I'm just curious, like, is it just my perception? Or is, you know, is my perception reality? Or am I just, that's just standing out?
I, yeah, I would say that's not typical. We always try to fill internally first. So there have been a couple of occasions where we've had somebody stay on and coach. Um, but we always try to fill first internally. So even if somebody is leaving, um, we have this twenty-six week break rule. When somebody leaves the district, whether it's a retirement or a resignation, um, and that's part of a different process. But, um, that usually comes into play if somebody wants to stay and coach. So there usually has to be a break in service. We've made some exceptions to that where we offer them health insurance right away, which is the reason we have to have that twenty-six week break. And with that, um, if we make a decision, it is more costly for the district to have that person come back before the twenty-six weeks because we're offering them health insurance where we're paying a proportion of it. And so, um, we do that very rarely and only when we cannot find another individual to coach either internal or external. So.
And I think it's fair to say that the preference is to have and.
Definitely.
Enough. Um, or some people we can't find positions for coaches occasionally. And then, um, it's lost.
I can give an example of my son plays tennis for West Fargo High School. We were desperate for a coach.
I call my old tennis coach.
Yeah. So there are some positions that are not as desirable and we really have to work hard to find anybody to coach it.
Okay.
Yep, I, I think I asked my dad too. So would you ever be interested in me? So they are very rare when we have that incidents where we go external. Um, it's really when we can't find anybody that's interested.
And I would also add that, you know, as we enter into the hiring season for our new teachers, our principals are working with our activities directors, like trying to vet out like, what are they interested in doing aside from teaching? And so they're, they are actively trying to find candidates to do both teach and coach as well, so.
Right, okay.
I think it's also important to note that the coaching is not part of the teacher's contract. So technically, a coach doesn't even need to resign. If they want to resign, they can resign, but each year is like a do-over. They are issued a coaching contract each year.
Okay.
So it's not a guaranteed, can you find this position?
Yeah. Each year is considered, but it's on.
It's on new year with its own.
Okay. Got it.
Your coaches are your best teachers, right, Ed?
We're very blessed to have people willing to do teach and coach.
Yes, it's not an easy job on either side.
We're very, and activities are such an important part of our learner's experience. The winning, the losing, the team keeps them in school.
Yeah.
And it's grades, all of that.
If that's any other question, you can add anything else.
I move to approve the staffing request for twenty-four, twenty-five as presented.
Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Further discussion. All right, let's move on to action rated B, uh, review, take action on award bids on a boiler replacement project from Liddon Center.
It was very sharp, we needed a boiler. Uh, the boiler has been on the deferred maintenance list for quite some time. It has licking issues, is a very large steam boiler. Um, I think the word that Mr. Lemery used was ginormous. And, um, the, the plan originally, the recommendation was to replace the boiler with three boilers. And, um, that way we could always keep one going and it would handle what all the one main boiler was doing. Um, but it came in way over budget, so over $400,000 more than what they had planned on. So the question was, one, do we just do it and report? Or do we look at some value engineering and come up with an alternate plan? Which is what was decided. And if you see in the memo, there are, um, scroll down to like the third and fourth page, there are four different proposals or recommendations that could possibly be considered. And after visiting with the team, the team determined that option number four, going with the dual fuel boiler made the most sense. That would be $223,000 and approximately less, um, which would get us closer to the original bid, even though we are still slightly over. So that is the recommendation. I'm appreciative that Mr. Goble is here to answer any technical questions on said situation.
I don't have any questions. I just want to make a statement that cost is what it is. But I so appreciate the strides that we've taken over the years on our deferred maintenance. It sure does make a difference, so I recognize that's.
I would think it's fair to say that Mr. Goble was on that immediately upon arrival to West Fargo Schools. So we're lucky to have him, if not.
Questions? Want to entertain a motion?
I move to award a contract in the amount of $1,550,000 to man a mechanical replacing the Liddon boiler. Who's the pronunciation?
Thank you, Dan. Hold on. You have a second? All right, Jim, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Any further discussion? All right, consent agenda, do you have a motion? I can send it, Jim.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Second, thank you, Dan, thank you, Trish. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Further discussion. All right. Speaker Kennedy's report.
We are coming upon our very last facility planning 2.0 and having a reprieve. Well, you do have a reprieve, it's this Wednesday.
Yeah.
We had it last week. We had the reprieve last week. Uh, yes, Liberty Middle School, 6:00 PM. So grateful for all of you. Um, I would maybe go off script and ask Heather how we're coming along with our virtual. I think you're close, that will be launched after April 10.
Yes, everything is ready to go. You guys would have received the email that I sent to the task force last week, um, just to provide all of our stakeholders an asynchronous option to be able to participate in that forum versus still having to show up on a day at a time, um, to receive that virtual information. But we still want to drive participation at our in-person forums as much as possible, which is why we're not promoting the asynchronous option until afterwards. So I have everything loaded up on YouTube and linked up and ready to go. And we'll push, um, release on that right away Thursday morning so that all of our stakeholders, staff and families alike, and then as well as all of our, um, non-affiliated like community members through social media will get a presentation.
So we can, as, you know, push those out to Facebook and.
Yeah.
And everything like that, yeah.
Yep.
Great. It's all enough.
Um, Kathy wanted me to remind everybody to get back to Heather with your graduation assignments. If you're able to, which, which schools you're able to attend so that Heather can assign the appropriate accounts, so. Well, that's all I have.
Can be a busy year this year.
Free for all of the community.
Yeah. By the community, yeah.
All right, with that.
Two o'clock, nine thirty-eight twenty.